Good evening, and welcome to the April eleventh, twenty twenty-two Allegheny Clarion Valley School Board Workshop. Tonight's meeting will be conducted virtually. I welcome all school board members, administrators, and members from the public to this meeting. During this workshop, I will provide the school board members with information that will help to clarify agenda items listed below. School Board will formally vote on these items at the April eighteenth, twenty twenty-two school board meeting. At this time, I'll have Madam Secretary do the rule call.
Carrie Armagost.
Here.
Megan Dreher.
Here.
Brady Fight.
Here.
Diane Page.
Here.
Jeff Powell.
Here.
Corey Sherman. Jermaine Stump.
Here.
Eric Sunling.
Here.
Kelly Chowilliger.
Here.
We don't have anybody under public participation or presentations this evening. As you can see, Greg Sanford from the Rashini Group will be here at the voting meeting to present information about our healthcare consortium. At this time, I'll open it up to any kind of board concerns that we may have this evening. Moving on down through the agenda, letter A is the conferences and field trips. Aaron, if you could take us to page five, I'll briefly describe some of the requests. The first one comes from Rachel Paz and Linda Farrington. Rachel is our Spanish teacher, and they're putting in to go to Grove City College for a tour. They'll participate in a college level class and speak Spanish with some of the current students who are at Grove City, and then they'll finish off the day with a meal at Compadres. Second request is from sixth grade Kerry Longo and Derek Carroll, as well as a number of chaperones. They're putting in to do the annual trip down Carnegie Science Center. They'll be at the sports works, though learn about fundamental science and benefits of a healthy lifestyle. They'll investigate principles of potential and kinetic energy. And then the final request on page five comes from Joe Graff and RJ. This is part of our career standards, and they're taking a group of students out to Triangle Tech to explore secondary options, and we have had students get a Triangle Tech in the past, so that should be a great trip. On page six, Michelle Austin's are homeless and the tennis officer, and she put in to go to the region five foster care update. They'll be providing information about changes in homelessness and bidding process, and we have a couple school board policies that relate back to this request later on in the agenda. We also have the ladies from the high school working with the TANF grant, Jen Stover and Peggy Flowman. They'll be doing a end-of-year banquet for their students to celebrate the completion of their student projects and completion of the grant. We also have fourth grade Amber Alworth, Sarah Black, Casey Cashdollar, putting in to go to the Keystone Safari. That's a culmination of classroom studies involving lifestyles, excuse me, life cycles, habitats, diets, and various wildlife from around the globe. And then our second grade teachers, Jackie Caldwell, Tracy Coyle, and Darlene Scott, put in to go for a end-of-year trip to Clarion County Parks. This is a fun activity that supports safety. They'll expand their knowledge and keep the kids safe at home, in the parks, and on the parks. On page seven, Megan Bashline, if you recall, she transferred up to the high school for next year to be our Autistic Support and Life Skills teacher. She found a professional development online training that she put in. They'll be learning about the ASD spectrum and how the best serve these students. Build relationships, trust, accepting self-advocacy, and working to ensure the safety and education of all of her students. Justine White, she's the advisor for the GIB club, and they do an annual cleaning of the veterans' tombstones, and they're going to the Allegheny Church. And GIB club is a wonderful organization that we have at the high school. Kristen Hurlbrink, she's our chemistry teacher, and she put in to go to Clarion University for a science and motions training, and it seems like she'll be able to be given materials and equipment to bring back, to share with her students. And then Trevor Howe and Jamie Simpson, they couldn't participate in our CPI refresher course this past year because of a conflict with letters training. So they put in to keep their CPI up to date, and they'll be going up to IU six. So that's a yearly update, and that's our crisis prevention intervention training that we do. And then I put in to attend Northwestern PA Summit Advocacy Trip. We represent over a hundred thousand students, and there's over a hundred school districts in the northwestern Pennsylvania. We get a group of superintendents. We go into Harrisburg. They will be in session on May twenty-third and May twenty-fourth, and we'll be talking about cyber school reform, special education funding plan con, equitable funding, and special education funding as well. Then Minnie Logue and Tracy Patton, they put in to take a group of our students up to Edinburgh University, and they'll be going through the admissions presentation and do a tour of the campus. Then Courtney Rice, she submitted a request. Courtney is our K through twelve grant-funded counselor to take the SAD members to a trip down to Kenny. Any questions on the conferences and field trips that were presented this evening? Letter B, under the consent agenda, we do have a couple substitutes. One, Kirsten Dunlap, she's going to be a sub nurse, and then Karen Farkas, she'll help out with the aides and secretaries. Letter C, and E will be retroactive. We've been working with Darla Slogan Hop and the Pre-K Counts Program with annual open houses, and they just missed the date of the March meeting, so they submitted this a little bit late, but it's for their annual meet and greet in the open house for parents. Letter D's an annual request from the AC Valley Keystone Youth Football Organization to utilize the football field for their games, practice fields for practices, and concessions in their restrooms. And along with the football team, they'll have the cheerleaders out there as well. Just keep in mind that in the past, we've charged this group three hundred dollars for a flat fee throughout the year, and then forty dollars for the night games to help offset the cost of electric. Letter E is a request from Stacy Fox and Cheerleaders. Spring Sports being so busy, they couldn't find another date to get everybody involved in the end-of-year banquet. So they had to have it on Sunday, April tenth, and we'll have to retroactively approve that when we talk to Stacy and the custodians down here to make sure the event was staffed. And then, letter F, I don't have a whole lot of information here. I just wanted to bring it up that Cindy King, your book advisor, will be meeting with me on Tuesday of next week and discuss the possibility of changing yearbook with the different contract coming to an end. She says that this will be a better product that's cheaper to our students. So either Cindy or myself will present information for the meeting. Under finance and purchase, I'll direct your attention to page two. There, I will be paying the bills at next week's voting meeting. Stacy Redding, our food service director, had worked on a grant, and kudos to Stacy because she was awarded the grant for a dual temp cabinet. And this is a three-section wide dual temperature, once heated and two refrigerated unit that will fit into the elementary school kitchen. She went out and got three bids, and the cost for this unit will be thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars. And again, it's grant-funded, and it'll it's something that we need here on campus anyway, so good for Stacy, and hopefully we'll approve that. And then, talking about cafeteria, we do have a couple motions in front of you this evening to increase breakfast and lunch cost by ten percent. Jefferson County Head Start, we put a motion in to increase about ten percent beginning of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. That'll take breakfast up to two oh five and lunch up to three fifty-five for those students. Breakfast and lunch at the district, the same thing. We're putting in a request to increase it ten cents. Just keep in mind that we haven't increased prices since two thousand and eighteen, and due to the increase in inflation, it's time to do that again. So for the beginning of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we're asking to increase breakfast prices to buck twenty, lunch to two fifty-five, and then reduce lunch will go up to forty and reduced, I mean, I'm sorry, breakfast at forty and lunch at fifty cents per minute. Letter L, this is an ongoing saga with Mid-Atlantic Youth Facility. Keep in mind that it was built back in two thousand and five. Sits on fifteen acres, and originally was valued at close to fifteen million dollars. It was on a tax-free KOZ zone for ten years. Once it got off the tax-free zone, the owner had it reassessed. It came back in at right around seven million dollars. And since then, it's gone up for sheriff sale, and the bank owns it, and they're asking to have it reassessed again. And preliminary numbers is that that facility could come in around four million dollars, maybe three point four million. But regardless, Butler County as well as the district will split the cost because we're the two biggest areas that are going to be impacted by this reassessment. So it's an estimated cost of four thousand dollars, so it would be two thousand for the district. Letter M, we put in a request to replace some carpet up at the high school library. We've had issues with a seam at the high school for a good number of years, and it became moist one summer and raised up, and Mark and his crew has done a great job by working and making sure it doesn't turn into a trip hazard, but it's to the point where it needs replaced. Mark worked with a vendor off the state bid list, and we have money remaining in his budget for this year, and it's a cost of twenty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And then, letter N, O, and P, I'm going to discuss all three of them as I share my screen here, and I have a preliminary budget analysis for you. And I've shared some information with the school board, but I walked the community down through this. Just keep in mind, and I do preface it with the fact that these are preliminary numbers. We don't know what the state budget will finally come in at. We're using the numbers that Wolf had put in his proposal, and then also, we're not sure how much federal money we'll be getting. Carrie had attended a federal programs meeting, but they were unsure as well. So the timeline that we had followed, we adopted this timeline early on. In March, we met with all the supervisors, and we collected their information for supplies, and everybody's well aware of our financial struggles and did a good job. So I'd have to say we're pretty much level funded, and again, that's been level funded since two thousand and ten, and we've, we've kept our supply categories very similar the whole way through. So staff's aware of that, and they're very conservative. I'm going to present information tonight as a gross overview, and then on the eighteenth, Andrea is going to break it down like Emmy had in the past, and go line by line and provide you with a much more granular view of that. May sixteen, we're hoping to have the preliminary budget approved, and it may change from now until May sixteen. We'll mail in the copy to PDE, and then we'll put a copy in public display for inspection. And then thirty days later, June sixteenth, we'll have a meeting to adopt the final budget, and then by school code, it is due to be submitted to Pennsylvania Department of Education by June thirtieth. Currently, the meals for the four counties, keep in mind, we're the only school in the state that smack dab in the middle four counties. These are the twenty-one, twenty-two mileage rates for each of the counts. An overview of the enrollment, and I started in oh six, oh seven, so that's the numbers that we have moving through. And as you can see, we were at nine forty-nine at the end of the oh five, six school year, and according to my calculations, we dropped down to we dropped three hundred and thirty-one students. We actually gained a few this past year, just coming back off of cyber, so we're at six eighteen currently. Keep in mind, we have roughly fifty students in outside cyber and thirty-nine, no, fifty students in homeschool and thirty-nine outside cyber. An overview of our staffing, one superintendent, two principals, a business manager, fifty-nine teachers, and I added in a projection. We have the ESAR two and three grant that we're utilizing, elementary math coach, potentially we'll do a half ELA coach and a half math coach, but we're still working through that. And then we have the K through twelve school counselor. With the aides, we have eleven, one full-time title aide, ten full-time child-specific aides, some of those part-time aides that went to full-time or paid through ESAR. With two school nurses, athletic director, athletic trainer, we have three counselors, intervention specialists, two librarians, two point one seven, so Mark shares James with the technology department, and then the maintenance is two point eight three staff, as well as why we have one person split. The custodian, we have a full-time, three part-time, one school psychologist, special education director, he works twenty-four hours per week. Social worker, currently we have contracted throughout six for four days a week. One part-time study hall monitor, and a tennis officer, four full-time secretaries, two part-time secretaries, cafeteria supervisor, one full-time cafeteria staff, and nine part-time staff, and one school police officer. This is in the budget for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So some changes in the budget. We're eliminating two teaching positions due to declining enrollment and budgetary concern. One through retirement, one through transfer. The Pennsylvania retirement system, we have a matching contribution of thirty-five point two six percent. So just keep in mind that every dollar we spend on salary, thirty-five point two six percent of that dollar goes into retirement. Healthcare increase, this is a really good number, believe it or not. It went up four point two percent. We've been averaging around eight percent the last couple of years. So we were pleasantly surprised. We, we have a rough, rough shot of the IU six billing special education costs, and again, with our autistic support and life skills classrooms, this is a general guess right now as far as what we'll be paying out, but that's pretty close to what we have in the budget currently. Career Center cost is three ninety-seven, six forty. We have that budget in front of you as well, to talk a little bit more. But that went up slightly because we're anticipating one extra student going to the Career Center. Outside cyber cost, again, I talked to Mike McGaughy from Tidesfield today. We're planning a place to start contacting our outside cyber students, but this is a rough estimate as far as the number of students that we have out. Outside placement, so these are kids that could be incarcerated or attending a juvenile detention center. Some uncertainties, again, like I stated at the beginning, we're not sure what that revenue from the federal or state government's going to look like. We need to discuss taxes. This will be on the voting meeting for us to take a look at it. Andrea and Emmy have run some numbers and shared some information with school board members as far as the index goes. And then ESAR three, we have three teacher salaries. That's a K through twelve counselor, elementary math coach, halftime ELA coach at the high school halftime, a high school math coach. We've upgraded our H-back controls at the elementary. We have Chromebooks and distance learning. And keep in mind, those coaches up at the high school, we're just trying to be creative to fill those positions. If we can find a full-time math teacher to replace Mary, we can get her in the coaching position. If not, we can absorb and get some support for our teachers up there. The next page, I'll show you a breakdown for this year's ESAR money. We have in the budget to add one extra day to our social worker to provide our students with that social emotional support. We have the math coach, counselor. We also use two hundred and seventy-three thousand, six eighty-four to help offset budgetary losses that we have, and we put in as a for a little prevention because we wanted to keep our number of students to staff ratio low. We have twenty-one thousand for after-school remediation, nine thousand for summer school remediation. Can tell you right now, it's tough to get the students and the staff to stick around after a long school year for summer and evening remediation, but Lori and her staff's doing a wonderful job down here right now. They're running a great program. We also put in to replace the UPS and projectors, twenty-one thousand, seven hundred. Through some of the information that came from Jeff and Aaron, the teachers really use their document cameras a lot, so we're looking to make some upgrades and replacement. We put fifteen thousand in to help offset some of AC Valley cyber costs, and then our annual technology software that we've been using for distance learning is roughly twenty thousand dollars. We also have five thousand dollars in there to add to professional development, depending on the needs of the district. We also utilize type two A for professional development. We put forty-one thousand in for Chromebooks. We have a full-time aide that we had put on federal programs administration fees of two thousand dollars, and then this is that math coach at the high school, which could be a part-time ELA coach or a part-time math coach. We have a little bit of flexibility. We'll have to go in and modify the narrative when we get to it, but that's the overall budget. Just keep that, keep in mind, that's just money that comes in and goes right back out. Now, a little bit more details as far as what that budget looks like in a comparison to last school year. You can see we have a list of the salaries, social security, retirement, unemployment, and working comp. And it went up a hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars from twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Health-related benefits, and again, that's that four point two percent increase. We have dental. It went up considerably. Andrea will talk about the specifics next week. Vision liability and disability. Vision life disability, I'm sorry about that. So it went up two hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Just keep in mind that during the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we had a kickback from the High Mark Loyalty Program of fifty thousand dollars, and then the school police officer and athletic trainer was not in last year's budget the ways this year. We did not have any health insurance for the school police officer, and the athletic trainer was a single life or a single-person insurance program. Moving into the cafeteria budget, this is an area that we've struggled with for a good number of years. We're trending, and we shouldn't, we shouldn't be making money in this statutory account, but we also shouldn't be losing a hundred thousand dollars. And you could just see where we've been at over the years. Last year, we did good with the free lunch program. The twenty-two, twenty-three school year, and again, this is an estimate with the increased cost of lunch and breakfast, we'll have a shortfall of ninety-two thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars. So overall, this is good news and bad news. We have expected revenue of fifteen million, seven hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars. Projected expenditures, sixteen million, two hundred and eighty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars. So that shows right now that we have a budgetary shortfall of four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, six forty-seven, and this is estimating that we'd raise taxes to the index of four point six percent. And please, I just remind everybody, these are estimates of our revenues. We have a pretty good handle on the expenditures right now. Andrea is going to break down the fund balance a little bit more next week, but I have just a little bit of comparisons in here, but currently there's a three million, six hundred and ninety-three, seven hundred and ninety-one dollar fund balance that we have. So the estimated shortfall for the current school year is one point three nine nine, one sixty-eight. For this fund balance, we also have the PZR set aside healthcare salary increase. The football field, and I should have numbers from the school board by next Monday. I talked to Amos and his crew. And then our estimated fund balance. If we continue to trend through the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, and then have the exact same budget that we have in front of the school board, we'd have one million, eight hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars. Just keep in mind, that shows you a little bit of a difference. I, I have a typo right here. I'm sorry that, that thing over a hundred times. We expected at the end of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year to have two million, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand and ninety-one dollars. So again, these are projected numbers, and Andrea will break them down a little bit more next week. Some future concerns that we have, ESAR three, we can utilize that grant through the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. It has to be spent out by September of twenty twenty-four. We have a track resurfacing project that we've not completed. We have a junior, senior high school auditorium renovation that's needed. Nobody knows what's going on with COVID nineteen at this time. It seems like it's trending down, and things should be okay, but who knows what that, how this could impact us. This basic education funding formula continues to trend in a downward projection for the district. We don't know Wolf's last term about this budget impasse, what it'll look like whenever it comes June thirtieth. We're always uncertain about the, you know, local money, depending on the index that we raise the taxes to, the state and federal revenue coming in, that's uncertain. Increase in healthcare costs, increase PZR, we won't have gigantic jumps anymore, and we're hoping by twenty thirty-five, it'll start coming down. Again, we have a declining student enrollment, and then we also have maintenance and upkeep of our facilities. Now, the next step is on the eighteenth, Andrea, she'll break down the revenues expenditures and present preliminary budget to the district. Now the next step is, um, on the eighteenth Andrea, she'll break down the revenues expenditures and present preliminary budget to the district. Any questions on that? Now you can bring up the work, the workshop agenda again.
David, just a quick question. This is Carrie. The outside cyber costs that you had, um, shown, uh, as projected, those are. The current rates, right? I mean, that's not, uh, you know, those could change if we. Are able to enroll any of those students into, um, the, the, uh, cyber program with Titusville, correct?
Yeah, absolutely, Carrie. You're right. We went off those current numbers, worst case scenario. So if we bring back two students or ten students, you know, those numbers will come down. Um, so we could have a significant savings in that area.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay. I know I presented a lot of information, so feel free to contact me, um, between now and next week. If you have any. Detailed questions, Andrea and I would be more than willing to answer them. Moving down into personnel. Uh, we have a couple employees asking for days off without pay that are A and B. And letter C, uh, we did have Justin Karamer, current part-time special education director. Leaving, go to a different school district, some exploring options right now. We do have a temporary, uh, director from the key source solution group. Uh, Dr. Vanessa Steele, she's filling in till the end of the year, see how well she does. Um, I've also reached out to intermediate unit number six to see if they have anybody that they can share with us and what the cost would be and who it will be. And then I figured to do our due diligence, we'll advertise for part-time special education director as well. Letter D, Megan Bashline resigned as junior high track coach and was hired on as the, um, union. School district track coach to coach the co-op. Letter E, we have Eric Roth and he submits a letter to be the school nurse, the volunteer school nurse on the senior class trip. So we thank Eric, Eric and Mary and all they do for the kids in the school district. Letter F, we had a resignation last month. We posted this opening internally, Amber Sanders, who's a. A long-term sub and current, uh, temporary part-time employee has submitted a letter to be approved. So talking with, uh. Um, Stacy, we put Amber back into this position and she's already worked forty nine days or so. So she won't have to put in an additional sixty days. We'll give her credit for those days because she was here and did a fine job throughout. Letter G, we talked about this, uh, intent to retire a couple of months ago, but we have a very nice letter from Lori Kersey and. And I personally thank her for everything she's done for the district and students over the years, but she'll. Uh, retire at the end of the school year and then letter H will post that position internally to. To fill that need and hopefully we can get somebody in there that's, um, similar qualities and attributes for the district. On the top of page three, you'll see another formal letter from Jackie Caldwell. Jackie was, is our second grade teacher. A wonderful person and a great educator. It's going to be missed by all. Uh, she'll finish off on, uh, the last in-service day, which is June first. Then letter J is a unique opportunity for us to partner with United Way of Vanago County. Uh, they have a program where they can send down a counselor one day a week. Uh, seven through counselor and they'll work with, uh, Mrs. Log up at the high school and focusing on career standards, uh, this. Um, group with Will Price at the helm, they're working with North Tharian right now and I believe Oil City. So I talked to Mrs. Logan, she'd be more than willing to have the additional support up there. We thought five thousand dollars wasn't a bad deal for, uh, one day a week. And we could explore various career opportunities up there. Um, this five thousand dollars is currently in the budget that I just proposed to you tonight. And then letter K, after we met with, um, a couple of school board members and, uh, the administrative team, we tried to, we're getting very creative with our staff. And for next year. So we thought if we can't find a full-time teacher to come in to move Mrs. Roth and into the full-time math coach. And maybe we could split that up and have a part-time E L A coach and a part-time mathematics coach. So with all that said, letter K is a motion to advertise internally to, um, potentially see if we can get somebody interested in being a part-time math coach. Who would analyze data, share instructional strategies and work with the students and the teachers at the high school, similar to what. Um, Trevor Howl goes down here at the elementary. And then with that being said, I did create a couple of job descriptions. In anticipation of, uh, those two positions at junior high, E L A coach as well as junior high math coach. And then, um, the autistic sport special education, uh, job description as well. I, I've been working on that one. So we have the job descriptions and, and a internal posting. We'll continue to, uh, work through various. Items to see what staff looks like next year up at the high school, but, um. Dr. Jordan Missalow's doing a good job of collecting information from the students and building that master schedule. So more to come on those items right there. Are there any questions under personnel before we move into instructional services? Okay, under policy, we just went through a homelessness audit and everything was fine. Michelle does a wonderful job. She's very knowledgeable about the needs of district and the requirements through homelessness. With that being said, uh, we have policies in place, but it was time to update. So just to provide a little bit of information. Let's keep in mind that the goals, uh, for these policies is to identify homeless children, youth within the district. Facilitate their immediate enrollment and eliminate or any kind of existing barriers. So sometimes these students are amongst us and we don't even know that they're homeless. These students are to be provided equal access to the same educational programs and services provided to other students. A definition for homelessness is when students are sharing the house with other persons due to a loss in their current housing. They could be living in a motel, hotel, trailer park or campground. They could be living in an emergency or domestic shelter. Abandoned at the hospitals. Um, these are students that their nighttime residence is that of a public or private place that's not designated. For a regular sleeping accommodation, or they could be living in cars, parks and public places, abandoned buildings or such. Um, within this policy, you'll see in school origin, this is the school that the students participating in whenever they actually had a. Address and a home that they were living in. So depending on the needs of that student and their request or families. Uh, we may have to work with a neighbor at school to keep the student here or. Maybe if the family found a house in a neighboring district, we'll work with them for transportation. And we've done this several times over the years where we may split the cost. We had a student over in Monta and split the cost until the end of the school year. And that's generally how this works. Depending on the time of the year that they become homeless, uh, will dictate what the rest of their year looks like. So we have our attendance officer and homeless liaison as the person responsible for this. And this person not only posts and seeks students and, and needs of the, um, local community. But she also does the enrollment and finds the, um. Best interest determination. So she works directly with the students and, and the parents. And then Mrs. Sherman, she'd worked with several of the local school districts with, um, shared transportation contracts. And we work with, um, children and youth as well. So we, it's a little bit, uh, difficult because we have four different counties. With four different, uh, resolutions in place, but everybody in that world cares about kids. So. That's the same policy two fifty one, very similar to policy two fifty five. The language is, uh, very similar. Um, it's just focusing in on students and foster care. Moving down the school board agenda, we don't have anything under facilities. Mark will be with us next week. But a discussion, um, that school board and I've been having since, um, the March voting meeting, whenever. Uh, Rick showed up was a transportation stipend. So I've worked with local school districts and tonight in front of you, we have a, a very similar. Um, calculation and stipend of what union school district does, not only because we share co-ops, but also we share some contracts. Uh, we have worked out some calculations. Uh, Jody Shakeley, um, transportation secretary ran some numbers and these are rough numbers because variables could be changing. But if we go back to March fourteenth, which was the day of the workshop. And run it for a month, that would be twenty two days. The additional. Monthly reimbursement for the buses would be one thousand, seven hundred and seventy three dollars. And for the vans, it would be four thousand, nine hundred and sixty one dollars. So you can, uh, we got March, April and, and May in front of us and. Um, if we do the stipend, when we have calculated out, it would be for. Um, you know, not only the A M T M runs, but also by their extracurricular runs as well. So I know the prices of fuel has somewhat stabilized, but it has increased. Since the beginning of the school year and, uh, we have a lot of, uh. You know, concerns, we want to support the drivers and contractors and both vans and buses, but also we're under a very tight budget as well. So. Um, if there's any questions for me at this time or Lori, she's on the call with us as well, we'll take them. Think we have a lot to think about. So, um, just give me a call or shoot me an email if you need any additional information. Now, as we move down through the agenda miscellaneous, we have the career center report in front of you and we have, um, Tracy's budget. For the career center and we've worked with her and our budget up four point six percent from last year. Last year we paid. Three hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars, um, as our share of running the career center. And then for this school year, we're anticipating three hundred and fifty six thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars. So it's up just slightly. And that's what I have for you this evening. If there's, um, any questions, I'll entertain them at this time. Hearing none, we'll go ahead and conclude the workshop. I'd like to remind the school board members that we do have an executive session scheduled, uh, for personnel. Immediately following this meeting. And thank you all for your times.